All right, ladies and gentlemen, now we're in room 119. It's about 8:05 PM. We're going to the general meeting for today's planning zoning commission meeting. First item, discussion on possible zoning regulation amendment regarding cannabis. What we need to do?
Well, as you know, at past commission meetings, we've discussed the potential for the commission to draft a zoning regulation to not allow cannabis dispensaries and cultivators either on a permanent basis or temporary basis. You may recall in 2014, the commission had a temporary moratorium on medical marijuana, which has since expired, but the commission voiced its desire to consider staff drafting formal proposal for a, to specifically say into regulations that dispensaries and cultivators are not allowed. So I just wanted to get feedback from the commission and then if you're all, if that seems to be the consensus, staff can work on something over the next few weeks.
Okay, so me personally, I would like you to draft a black and white resolution saying that cannabis is not allowed in town. I guess it's a general meeting item, so we can take a vote on it. Do we want to make discussion on that at all? Okay, so can I get a proposal to have staff draft a cannabis, what do you call it, a negative resolution?
Well, it should be a basically-
A text amendment to our-
A text amendment to the regulations to say that this is not allowed. Some towns do allow it, some towns don't.
Okay. The sale of cannabis is not a permitted use.
Right.
Did you make that motion?
No sunset.
I'm happy to undo it. Why did I didn't make it?
No sunset.
Just to be clear, also no sunset provision, just a permanent change of the regulations.
Okay. So George made a proposal. Do you make it in the second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Okay, so we'll start drafting.
Did you draft the amendment? Was that something you were interested in?
I think it's too difficult probably to regulate at this point. I think we could probably address that under special permit. If they, some type of shop came to us, right, they'd have to come to us for a special permit anyway, and we could put it in there.
What he's talking about is the power of the equipment. So, I mean, I don't know if you have any kind of, you know, regulatory in the zoning regs that retail stores consult 50% of their stock?
That's something that we would work with town council on, doing a little research on what communities have been successful in that and how they've approached it. Certainly what you just spoke about, I think, is a little more straightforward.
Why don't we do the straightforward piece first and then we can stack it up?
Okay, so we'll start in on that and we'll plan on having a public hearing, probably May or June.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, deliberations only regarding, the first item is proposed amendments to the Darien zoning regulations, COZR number 1-2024, PL 24-3, put forth by the Darien planning zoning commission. Proposal to amend sections 210, 403, and 407 of the Darien zoning regulations to permit the construction and habitation of accessory dwelling units on certain residentially zoned properties under specific design circumstances. Where permitted, one ADU may be allowed on the same lot as a principal single family dwelling and may be attached to or detached from the principal dwelling. The full text of the proposed regulation amendment is on file and available in the town clerk's office and planning and zoning office and in the planning zoning office for inspection and online at darienct.bpoint.com, that's PL-24-3. Two or three weeks ago, we had a public hearing with regard to this item that is in, being considered by the P and Z. We kept public, we closed a public hearing, but kept public comment open for another, I think, 10 days through last Sunday. Over the weekend, or in that open period, we did receive some additional public comment to, on the proposal. One was a person that, we don't have their address, John Capiello, is he a resident?
John lives in town, built a number of homes in town.
Okay. He commented on the Inlaw Suites, Peter McGinnis, 22 Robin Hood Lane, he commented on it. And then Peter McGinnis, two from him, right? We also, I guess, I, did I technically put this in the file?
We put that in the record, the letter from the, letter to the Connecticut examiner.
It was a letter to the Connecticut examiner on March 16th, 2024, I think, by a person that, the closing word was good luck in Darien with this subtle warning. Then we got another comment from a person named Mary Kay Daughters, I guess who does not live in Darien anymore, but at one point in time, I think she did, when that came in. So with regards to the public hearing, the hearing was closed, the proposal is drafted. Does anybody want to comment on what they thought of that came out of the public hearing that would change your mind or change anything that's in their proposal at this point? Do you want to go first, Jamie?
I had a couple of notes about possibly having a P and Z review for external ADUs rather than just based on the lot size of the ADU, because that's, I think at the time, we might be dealing more with parking and landscaping than the internal ADUs.
Okay, yep, that's the freestanding piece of it.
And then, do we have anything in the draft about the accessory unit being no taller than the primary height of the-
No, we don't have anything about that in terms of height.
I was just thinking about that with some, some of the older homes that aren't really, you know, the top of the height restriction.
So in that example, you might have a one-story house that's an older house and they build a two-story ADU.
Or on top of the garage, so it's taller than the, that was in one of the images that's in the presentation.
Right, is, as you said, could be a room over the garage. You have a two-story building or one, you have a ranch and you put something over the garage, or as you said, now, there's not a lot of ranches in town, but there are a handful where you could say, and the ADU could be taller than the main structure, not necessarily bigger, or maybe you make, you build a new house and the front structure becomes your ADU.
Well, that's, yeah, that's in some of the, it was in some of the town ordinances that ADU could be closer to the front lot line than the main house.
Yeah, all of the setbacks are the principal structure. Right, that's the way it's set now. Does anybody have any thoughts on that, where the ADU can be taller than the principal house?
I think you have sometimes that in a regular, in a regular renovation, you have a cape and you've got, you know, somebody below a story over top of a garage and it looms over the main structure. It's an interesting aesthetic that might not be pleasing to your certain eyes, but I don't know that, I don't know what you do with that.
They would still have to conform to the building code, though, right?
Correct. Conform to our building code with regards to-
And if it doesn't have to come to us, does it have to go to architectural review?
It would not, is my reading, because it's still a single-family structure, I'd have to, it would be two single-family structures. I'd have to double-check that, but what the proposed regulation amendment envisions is not going to architectural review board.
Anything else, Jamie?
That's it for right now.
George? Well, I don't need to tee up the owner occupancy discussion, I'll leave that to others who have been very articulate on it. I don't think I have any other particular issues at this point, no. Okay. Next item?
Yeah, I don't have any issues with the, with the regulations at all. I think it's a good thing that we're doing. I will say on the owner occupancy bit, when we had the first public hearing about it, I don't even remember when that was, in the fall, I didn't think the owner occupancy rule made sense. You can rent out your house now, so we're saying you can't rent it out in the future or you must live there, or your house must be vacant. I think it's your house, your ADU, you own it, you can do what you want. I do think, I do agree, we shouldn't be able to split the lot and sell off the ADU, right? So it's got to stay under the same principal lot, but if the owner wants to rent out both pieces, then rent out both pieces. I don't think you'll see an increase in the number of people living there than any owner could increase the size of their family or decrease it as they want. So I would be against that sort of provision. I think if they want to rent both of them out, then so be it. But otherwise, other than that, I think the bulk of it is good and, you know, I think we're kind of all in agreement. I thought the town, the public comments on it, gauging sort of the sediment of it, seemed to be broadly in favor of it, so I think we should act on it. Even if we do, I like the idea of the sunset provision, since this is something new for the town. This way, we can see what works, what doesn't work, and then we can change it, you know, three years, five years, something like that, I think is perfectly reasonable, and then we can go from there, some future body can figure out, and there's no sense in making this permanent, since this is so new, we don't know if this will be a big deal, or with all the units coming on in town, if this will be kind of a MOO thing we're arguing about when time has sort of passed us, because we're adding so many units to the town just via natural construction. So my hunch is that it won't be that big of a deal. I think for towns that aren't building as much as we are, this is probably a much bigger deal, but I have a feeling here, this will end up being something that is really not a heavy use at all.
There you go, there you go. So at the end of the day, it's, it's to sell up relative to the owner occupancy provision, you want it to be, both sides to be rented, the ADU and the house?
It could be, yeah, absolutely. I don't think we should put any restrictions on the ability of the owner to rent out either or both or neither.
Okay. So I'm not going to use the word two-family rental?
Yeah.
It's technically a two-family rental, even ones, it's a one-family within ADU.
Within ADU, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the enforcement of it would be almost impossible. I think it adds unnecessary administrative burden towards it. We have to register with the land records, we do it every year, send out a zoning enforcement officer, it's for what end? Doesn't seem like it's worth the, worth the time and worth the effort.
And the way it's drafted now, it's, one of them has to be owner occupied, right? You only rent out one side.
That is provision number nine.
Okay, so that's a change to what's there now. Okay. Amy?
I feel, I am an advocate for property rights, I understand your perspective, but we're often faced, like in most presidential elections, picking a candidate or an outcome that you may not support 100% either way, but you pick the one that you think is the best. And I think in this case, having some governors around and some belt and suspenders and some brakes on how we're doing this, I lean more towards putting more brakes on it and having more regulations around it. And so I would not want to see people buying properties with the intent to make them investment properties and renting out a house and an ADU. So I'm more in the camp of trying our very best to make sure somebody is, you know, at home and governing that and answering to their broader community and doing it in a respectful way that blends with their streetscapes and their neighbors. So, and that's, that's why I kind of lean towards that, at least for this preliminary and see how it goes.
Any other items that you would change or support and wouldn't change? One of the things I keep talking to you about and it's never got anywhere was the setbacks on the side yards.
Yeah. I, I really, again, that's one of those ones where I think I'd like to err on the side of, it should adhere to the main, main building setbacks, because there's going to be people living there and coming from like a half acre property where you can have that detached garage being so close to your neighbor. I wouldn't want to have, you know, that become a rental over the top and being looming over neighbors' property lines. I like the, let's start out of the gate with if meeting main property setbacks, principal setbacks.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with Amy, I think, just to, I think the owner occupied is a good idea. I think avoidance of making Darien a two-family town with investment properties. The other thing is blight, right? You take care of your own home a lot, well, generally, people take care of their own home more, you know, in a stricter standard than they, than they would for an investment property. And, you know, I think that that's a slippery-
Communicating with their neighbors and passing their neighbors and-
And having those conversations and having a vested member of the community in the property is important. Adam, I get your point, right, your property, your rights, your rules, but I think the reason we have zoning regulations is because we can't rely on your property, your rights, your rules, right? We do zoning regulations for that reason. I had a couple other comments, I always seem to have a couple other comments, but the other thing that concerns me is, and I know I've voiced this before, you know, the second floor, the basement apartments, I think they're fraught for abuse. I think that, you know, having ADUs attached to the structure isn't necessarily a bad idea, but you've seen it, I've seen it, you know, you can drive, you can drive West Normal Road and see, you know, stairwells and satellite dishes and blight, right?
Yeah.
And that's really what I like to avoid for Darien. The other question I had, and it just came to mind, because I did it for a client, how does, in Patty and Wayne, maybe, maybe you could, you could opine on this, or maybe, I don't know how that would fit into this, but the condo rules, right? You can condominiumize your property as of right, so if you set up an ADU, can you then turn around and condominiumize it and sell off a unit?
It's an interesting question, and in fact, I think there's a provision here, number 12, and this is where Patty and Wayne's input is valuable, because it says, "The ADU cannot be sold separately from the principal dwelling. It is not to be sold or condominiumized or any form of shared interest ownership or in any way marketed or sold as a separate ownership entity." So I don't want to put them on the spot, but certainly that is a good question in terms of-
And does that supersede the state condo statute?
So that's, that's in our provision, right?
That is one of the provisions, but Mike's question is a good one, is if the state allows you to do something, do we have the right to say, oh, you have to-
You can't do that.
And I, I don't know the answer.
And again, just came to me sitting here, when, Adam, I think you mentioned that, right? Because I think condos are as of right under the general statutes, but I'm not sure what all the rules are on those.
Are we allowed to put you guys on the spot? You get the TVs up and I get the one? Or else somebody?
I'm not that familiar with them either. I will say though, it just occurs to me that it would not be an accessory dwelling unit at that point, right? I mean, maybe two-
Excuse me, I'm sorry, just need your name for the record.
I'm sorry.
Joshua Gao, Curtis Prickelhoff, and that.
It's town council. Thank you.
Wouldn't be an accessory, it would be two primary units at that point, so I think you're, you'd have to satisfy whatever those requirements are, including subdividing your property, not subdividing it, but partitioning off the interests, so.
It's a good question, we'll get you an answer.
Okay, because I was going to say, it's, one, one of the units is going to be smaller than the other, right? So it's 30%? Yeah, I mean, that's one thing, well, if you give us an answer to that, that'd be great, because if you can condominiumize it, which is a hard reset, right, because we have a bunch of condos in town that are really land condos, and they were all over the grounds. Those land condos all over the grounds. Grove Street is one, the butcher shop and the other one.
There are a number of residential condos, whereas some, there's residential ones as well, where people have condominiumized a piece of their property and it often results in confusion or uncertainty. We've had to go out and try to referee a few situations where people don't understand that you don't own this, you own this, you have the shared rights to the parking area in between the two units, whatever it might be, so.
Okay. My, if you can help us with that, that'd be great at some point. My big items are, is, I'm not going to get too deep into weeds, but the 30% rule that we came up with, I think is fantastic. You know, there was some comments at the meeting that we should change, if it could 50/50 or 60/40 or something like that, I don't want to touch that at all. The enforcement thing, I think we got to figure out that piece of the puzzle, and if town council can help us with that, to enforce these things, that'd be great. I do like the thing that we talked about where a grant requires, once an ADU gets registered, there's an affidavit that they sign. Are we allowed to do a filing fee with that and make it an annual?
Well, certainly for deed restricted housing, they have to certify to me every year that the people income qualified. There is no filing fee, they just have to provide me the paperwork. So usually, we say that they're all due January 1st, and by mid-March, I had all nine of them wrapped up. So they trickle in, which is what I would expect here.
Right.
There wouldn't, it's tough to say there's a filing fee, because you're not filing it with the town clerk, you're just filing it with our office.
With your office at the building department? Isn't the building department under any of your purview?
Yeah, but what we would do is either probably-
That's how revailing does it.
Right, you'd have a file for the ADU, we'd create a file, we'd just put the paperwork in the file, whether it's a hard copy or-
What's the point? If we don't have any fees, it's like a law with no, with no fines, it's sort of like the personal fine for not carrying health insurance, it's zero, it ends up being mood stricken off anyway.
No, but it's-
But it's a certification to the town.
Yes, it's, I want to, what I want these, these things to do at the end of the day is to be registered. Like, we passed the law and now Darien's got, you know, 100 ADUs, and each person that has an ADU, they pulled a permit at the building department because they put it in a second kitchen, you know, so we know it that way, but it should also be on file at P and Z. I mean, I don't know how closely, if somebody does it as of right, and I know you filed the building permit in your office and then you sent it across the hall.
Well, you'd have to get an approval from either planning and zoning or staff, so written approval, congratulations, this qualifies as an accessory dwelling unit under section 420. You may now apply for the necessary zoning and building permit to install the second kitchen or the second unit based on the floor plans you've given us.
Okay, right, so then, then in that, once it's, once it's done, because you're going to get a CMO, right?
You get a CFO for that and then you can arguably rent out or move there.
So the CFO is technically a filing document, that's how you can keep, you can keep it?
Right, we would know.
Yeah, but then you're asking people who rent it every year to hand Jeremy a piece of paper that they may or may not hand them, that has no fine for it.
Which is what Rhode Island makes you do, that you have to register it every single year. Okay, that's, then the other one that I want to do is, if someone has an existing building or structure that can be rented as an ADU, how do we grandfather those people in and make them legal?
They would have to, there are, let's call it 50 properties in town that have legal second structures, for whatever reason. They predate zoning would be one reason, so we do have people that have, I'll call it a house and then a garage in the back and an apartment over the garage, which is legal. It's either been approved by the zoning board of appeals, they predate zoning, some situation. And there's a hand, as I said, 30 in town, 30 or four of them, and those are legal apartments. They would not need to come before anybody, because those are already legal, they're grandfathered in. There are some illegal apartments. Maybe they would come to us, maybe they wouldn't, but not all the illegal apartments would meet all these criteria, or it might be too close to the property line. They might be too big, they might, so they might just say, why would I come forward? You can't give me a permit if you wanted to. And I would doubt the ZPA would grant a variance, there's no hardship.
Right. So those are, we're never going to get those to be legalized or be uncovered, out of the shadows, we want to call it.
Yeah, there's, again, maybe there's 50 of those in town.
Do we want to enforce those?
We don't enforce them now.
We don't enforce them now. We tried to.
We tried to.
I think we should really try and enforce those. If we're going to make ADUs legal, then they should either conform and bring them into, you know, out of the gray area, or they should not rent them.
Dude, that's what, that's what gives us the new, because we're doing this now, then we can teach. It gives you a way to do it.
And there's plenty of people that have these structures, full structures, outbuildings, barns, whatever else, that they're just not going to rent them, they're using them for their primary family's use, so there's no impetus for them to register them, because their intent is to not-
Yeah, the number of people I've spoken to, just what Amy said, who've heard about the hearing, have come to me and said, oh, great, my parents now live in X, this way when they come visit me, they'll stay in the outbuilding for whatever time they wish, and that would be great, they can cook their own meals, you know, maybe on a night like this, they just stay in, but on a nice night, you go back and forth, walk between the two buildings or whatever. But many people have come to me and said, that would be my opportunity for my parents to stay on the property.
There was a guy that testified at the hearing about that. With regards to the kitchen though, I think the way the wording was, that even it was a hot plate or a microwave oven, that constituted a stove or not?
What we use is hot plate or oven more so than a microwave. So for example, microwave, if a pool house and a sink, but as soon as you get that cooking facility, that would trigger-
Something that needs to augment, right? Microwave's something to augment.
Microwave doesn't need a coffee maker, maybe doesn't toaster, rubber doesn't need a thing.
I mean, I could live in the pool house and-
I do, and there's a toaster, there's a microwave, and there's a coffee maker, so I'm happy to come in. Okay, so we'll move this forward, so what we can do is staff, is try to make, I want to move forward, right? Yeah, I just wanted to take a second, because I deferred my opportunity to talk about the owner occupancy, and that has been nicely articulated by the others, I want to associate myself, in particular with Adam's comments, I do believe that it is perfectly appropriate to permit these properties to be non-owner occupied. I don't really see great concern that, that the properties will be let go, that it's going to become any kind of blight condition, and as a member of the BLIT board, I don't want any additional properties to have to look at, and, but, you know, in leases, I know that these non-occupant owners can provide, that people will take care of the properties, and they should do so, or the owners will want to protect their own interests in the property, so that they'll make sure that they remain properly painted and looking appropriate. And I don't, you know, I don't have any particular concern about the fact that they would be non-owners residing there, and as we have learned recently from council, that the state favors the ability of owners to rent their properties, and I think that that is appropriate as well. So I'm, well, going that way. Okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't you draft, right now, there's six of us that spoke, there's at least two commissioners that would like to have it not owner occupied, allow both rentals, right, so we're not, take out the owner occupied. So why don't you write, why don't you write the final resolution or final text amendment with both, and that we can negotiate that end of the session. Did you weigh in on that?
I didn't, but I, my opinion is do with the owner occupancy in some way.
So if they're taking a straw vote, that's, that's three that want owner occupancy and two that don't, and they make it a deal. So three of those.
Okay, so what we're going to do is, because it's a zoning regulation amendment, we have to write up a resolution saying how it's consistent with the town plan, give it an effective date, there might be a typo or two we just need to correct, just clarify everything. So it'll be time for discussion at an upcoming meeting, April, May.
With the resolution, with the proposed text amendments attached to it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments to throw at it at this point in time?
Just that EPC, do we have everything from the environmental regulations that they, from the number on the 13, 12, Marshall? Clarify the provisions proposed amendment to ensure any proposed ADU must fully comply with the provisions of all environmental regulations and-
Yeah, I think that's something that Fred and I need to talk, whether that needs to be in there or whether that's just redundant, because we wouldn't, we don't say for single-family houses, that, oh, by the way, if you're going to do this, it has to apply with everything else in the book. If you're going to do this, it has to apply with everything else in the book. If you're gonna do this, it has to apply with everything else in the book. So Town Council's gonna work on researching one other item. We'll keep kicking this round. We'll have a draft resolution buttoned up with reasoning, findings, effective dates, buttoned up.
Are we all for the sunset after five years? So we're clear, we're not making this permanent, right?
No.
Everyone's in agreement on that?
I'll agree five years.
Some future commission changes they want or not.
Do you guys wanna chime in on anything relative to this topic?
Yeah.
We're not going down any wrong paths, right? We keeping it between the white lines? I like staying on the fairway. So that's it, that one. Next, I'm gonna change it. Deliverations to possible decisions regarding site application number 310B, Special Permit Act, application number 324B, flood prevention application number 425B, 7 Cedric Avenue, LLC at 7 Cedric Avenue. Proposal to raise the existing bank building on the site, convert and redevelop the property as multifamily residential, and perform related site development activities within a regulated area, including limiting recreating of the property, installation of landscaping, lighting, and stormwater management. The applicant proposes to construct a three-story multifamily apartment building with a total of 18 one-bedroom apartments on two floors above a parking level, establish a 4,969 square foot of square feet of public plaza areas, and an off-street loading area. A total of 30 surface-level parking spaces will be created under the building. The public area closed on February 27th, and the decision deadline is on May 2nd. In our packet, we've got a draft resolution in here that goes through all the findings and final decision on this item. There's a couple of things that we should talk about in various spots, just to make sure we're on the same page and make a couple of decisions. Are there any initial comments, typos, scripters, or is this what anybody kind of correct up here?
I don't know.
Okay. Mike, you wanna take us out first with any of your opinions on it? Or you wanna be best for last?
No, I mean, I think I've made my opinion pretty clear about it. I think, you know, if you look at Section 15 on page four, you know, I just generally disagree with the fact that the central business regulations don't require any other principal use of company dwelling units on upper floors. I mean, it goes in the next sentence, those Section 721 background purposes, which is part of the regulations, says that it's supposed to be first-floor retail or professional offices. So I think it's contradictory, but if I had my druthers, I'd say something to the effect of that regulations aren't clear on the issue. Because I do think that the intention, and Fred Cogsey testified to the fact that we'd be throwing away 25 years of zoning precedent by approving something like this, that it certainly indicates. But again, I know I'm a minority on that issue, so...
Actually, I agree with what you're saying, and I'm wondering if, Jeremy, if you can... You mentioned before possibly some other examples that you think might have followed this...
The only one I can think of is, I think it's the Glass Building, which I think used to be in a different zoning district. I don't think that was in the CBD zone when it was built.
What building?
The Glass Building in 23 Old Kings Highway, the black glass building, which is three doors down from this. 800 Post Road, that building where Burger Shakes and Fries is. I think there's a first-floor use for park or all of the building.
Offices above.
Above, offices above. Is there another one, Fred, again?
The argument is, your argument that there's no use on the first floor.
According to this, their use on the first floor is park.
Parking, right.
Right? And the regulations say that the use on the first floor should be retail or office.
Correct.
So if they're calling a three-story building, their first floor, which is the parking area, should be retail or office.
Right.
I mean, that's a pretty clear reading in the zoning regulations. I don't think that that's a confused reading, but apparently I'm in the minority on that, which is fine.
No, it just came up five years ago.
But I do know that other applicants have had to put in first-floor retail.
Were they in severely compromised flood zones?
Well, but that's a different argument, right? If you're gonna make that argument, then you need to do an overlay zone, or you need to make some special exception.
A variance.
Right. You can't just sort of pick and choose how you're gonna interpret them based on the property because that's... And actually, I'd rather be accused of spot zoning than just ignoring the zoning regulations.
Because the other thing is, maybe it's similar, maybe it's not, is, well, you're not allowed to have a wheelchair on the first floor or a building on Post Road. And that's how we got around bank branches and real estate offices. Because there has to be a feasible reason why we've come up with the finding that retail is not viable where a bank loan is. Because we enforced that for bank loans. And then we didn't enforce it for companies.
So if you find, if you create the finding that retail is not feasible, then do you need an overlay zone?
Yeah, because then the default is office. The regulations say if retail's not feasible, you can make it office.
Which is what bank loan is. And that's what companies is.
And I think the one on 23 Old Kings Highway, the Glass Building, is two floors of office, right?
Two floors of office above parking.
Right.
But again, when it was built, it might not have been considered CBD zone.
Right.
23 Old Kings Highway, that's really just sold.
No. It's a... The black glass building next to David Genovese is the building on 23 Old Kings Highway.
No, but it's not 23. 23 is on the other side of the street.
Maybe it's...
It's 30, 30 Old Kings Highway.
30 Old Kings.
Right. So there's no use.
Just no layer on the first floor.
That's...
And a lobby.
Yeah, it's got a lobby on the first floor and parking underneath. And there's nothing on the first floor. And David Genovese at 34 Old Kings Highway, he doesn't have any retail on the ground floor. I mean, he's got office space. Yeah, he's got office on the ground.
So it could be...
Okay. I like to highlight what the applicant has argued to us, because I don't have a way to refute it. It says that the CBD does not require any other principal use of company dwelling units on the second floor. Section 721 is a statement on background and purposes, and it states that the CBD regulations are designed for retail uses on the first floor and professional offices above. But neither 721 nor any CBD regulations that govern principal and accessory uses requires a second principal use. And we know also that parking is an appropriate secondary accessory use on the property. So I... And as I've said before, it makes no sense for anything other than cars to be parked in a flood zone.
Which, that's the last sentence on paragraph 15. Says, "Commercial acknowledges that the project site is entirely in a flood zone and no enclosed principal use would be feasible at the ground level without raising the grade several feet and possibly affecting the base flood elevation for stormwater patterns." So that's the finding. Okay. Okay. You're good with that? That's your big thing, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think the parking is confused, but we made a decision on that, and we gotta stick to the commission's decisions.
Confusing, but...
We chose to ignore the regulations under 726 and just applied 900.
Oh.
And we made a decision. I mean, the commission made a decision on that, so it was not...
It's a paragraph...
No, unringing that bell, if you will.
Paragraph 24.
Yeah. But George, I think the problem I have is that just because it says it's, right? Like, if you look at some of the other regulations, we make the argument that if it's not specifically allowed, it's not permitted. And for us to say if it's not denied, it is permitted, that's almost a reverse way of looking at the zoning regulations. Right? When the background and purpose of the regulation says we're supposed to have retail and office on the first floor, yeah, it doesn't say you can only have retail and office on the first floor, but it's directing you that that's the way you're supposed to read the regulations. So I do understand I'm in the minority, and I'm okay with that.
Okay. Amy?
I am good. I just wanna make the commentary that I do like the additions that we've made with regards to requiring lease, the notifications and disclosures on their leases, that they are, you know, that, I think it's section of flood damage prevention section, and that we're requiring them to put certain amendments or notifications in their leases about the process for alerting a flood and whatnot. So I do think that's a...
The president shall provide with information material in lease documents about preparations for a flood, potential flood event, including but not limited to stockpile emergency supplies, preparing an evacuation plan, securing of essential property, potential hazard remaining in terms of...
Yep, so it's kind of, it's been notified that all of those things are, can happen, and these are the things you should be doing to prevent exposure, or to do in an event. So...
Cool. You're good? Adam?
Two things, one small. On section N, where it says, "Trace key boxes, blah, blah, blah," and then it says, "Access to the building shall be." And then mine doesn't have any more text after that.
Yeah, you're right.
Look at the last sentence. "Access to the building shall be," and then something.
It's your typeface, your scripter's error.
And I'm not sure if we wanna say, I'm not sure if trace, the first word in that is the right spelling, or if that's the brand name or whatever. So I'd be happy with just key boxes, but, or electronic key boxes, whatever you wanna do. So I'm not really sure how that... That seems a bit unclear, that thing, but that was kind of minor.
That was specified by the fire marshal.
Yeah, I'll have to check with the fire marshal what he meant by that.
Okay.
So that's like you're making a Xerox code or something.
Yeah, track access key boxes and then parentheses or, you know, future equivalent.
Something, yeah, that's all. And then the only other comment I would have is in M. Instead of asking for all cash in lieu to a trust fund that may at some point in an indiscriminate future possibly ever build affordable units, I'd rather see some units, even if they're small piecemeal two units, be put in here, or at least one, and then have the remainder go in. I get the argument where if we build a trust fund, then we can build a bunch of affordable units, the town can, but to me, that seems like such a far-off distant reality of this $900,000 becoming use for someone when we could have two units that could be used today or tomorrow or in the near future. So I'd rather see the affordable units get built versus the cash. So that'd be my only point in M, but I don't believe that to be a showstopper. And that'd be it for me. Otherwise, I think this was a good, you know, revision as to what we just saw, you know, previously. So I think they thought this through, and they did a decent amount of work here, so I'm, you know, generally for it.
Okay. So if you go to paragraph 12, it says, "You're picking B as void versus C as internal?"
Correct. B or A. Let's just get at least one affordable unit in here.
Okay. George?
I've said in the past, on that particular unit, I think in this case, I would think that we can use the $900,000 with the existing $100,000, so it'll add almost a million bucks. I think that can be used fairly soon. I gather the last time that fund was used was for Allen O'Neill or the Royal?
Not the Heights, the Royal.
The Royal, the Royal, okay. Not so long ago, and so we haven't refunded that account, I gather, except to the $100,000. And so I think we can do some useful things. And frankly, the two units, I don't think is overly persuasive for that purpose. I'm sure there'll be other projects, I think we know of at least one, that will provide more units, and hopefully we will be able to either not have all cash or compromise, whatever that may be. But that's a different project. For this one, I would take the line.
Okay. Any else?
None for me. Thank you.
Jamie?
I agree with Commissioner Nether. I think you said it very well. I don't think... The regulations are designed for commercial sales and services.
Okay. Maybe personally, I don't think it makes any sense to put retail on the ground floor or office on the ground floor as a ground floor. The only thing you can do there is nothing, which is parking. So that's in contrast to what Mike and Jamie are saying. With regards to the inclusion of affordable units, I firmly believe that we could use the $900 someplace, and I would take all, I would take all the money versus splitting the baby. I mean, if you read some of this stuff, it's, few points is the same thing as a mortgage warrant point. I think if you put one unit there, you're getting, I think the first paragraph talks about, you get .52 shoot points. That doesn't do, that doesn't move the dial at all. We're not really chasing mortgage warrants, we're chasing units. But I do think that if you get a million bucks plus another big chunk of money, you can leverage that money towards something big. It is, one of our set of three-story building. I think they did come up with a good design. I don't know if they're gonna, it's gonna be an expensive design. I couldn't really find anything that was wrong with this thing, other than what we talked about with Mike's last thing. That one sentence that Adam just picked out, do we know what that thing is? Have we just taken that out, or where do we go?
Yeah, I do not know what that is off the top of my head. We'll have to...
Maybe it's a comment from the fire marshal, the sentence just dropped off.
I don't think so.
Don't think so? Okay.
Let's do the simple lease stuff first. With regards to the, how to figure out the affordable components, you said you want one unit and, one unit affordable and then cash. Do you have an opinion on that?
I think if you're gonna take the cash, take the cash, but I think one unit's not gonna, not gonna move the needle for that.
Take the cash.
Okay.
I'll cave on the cash, though. It's still a unit. Somebody said, I get, we're not chasing points, but somebody still gets to move in there, right? Whereas now they don't, and somebody potentially gets to move in in the future. And I get it's not a big deal, but when you got Goodwives Plaza, Stop &amp; Shop right there, and you've got a couple pizza places, a bunch of restaurants, that's somebody who's gonna be working at those places that's now gonna be coming in from Norwalk.
I rationalize it, that I think we could do potential greater good with taking the money and putting ourselves in a position to do something more transformative. That's what I have.
That's right, I think you're putting leverage on that. Okay, and you're okay with that, and you're okay with that. What do you wanna do about this ground floor issue? Do you wanna bolster it again, do a little bit more research, punt this for another week? We don't have to sign off on this thing tonight.
Correct, we do not need to...
Well, it's time. We should be done.
It's April 2nd, it has to be done by May 7th.
What we can do is...
It doesn't look like those two votes are gonna change.
I think we're at the point where we just need to...
Right, you can bolster it all you want. I don't think they're gonna change their mind.
Yeah, I think we're at the point where you need to decide.
So the changes I just heard, the only changes to the draft I've heard so far would be...
Strike access to the building.
Yeah, strike that, just one sentence in N.
Correct.
That's it.
Or we should say, yeah.
And just confirm that track access is the right term.
Right.
Just strike the third sentence.
Yeah, we could say as amended there. That's fine.
Okay, so it's time that we're ready to vote. Ready, ready to vote? Ready to vote? Okay, let's call the question. I'm looking for a motion to, for approval of the draft version as edited. Only edit we're making is paragraph Ennis and Nancy, and just for clarification, we're keeping C's and Charlie, which is... which is reiterated as item number Emerson there. George makes a motion for a second? Adam makes a second, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, it's four to two. Motion passes.
Thank you all.
All right, next item on the agenda is, I might have to pump this to you. Landfilling, additional, yeah, delivery to a possible hearing. I want to pump this to Adam. I was not at the meeting on March 26th, and I did not see the video. I'd like to answer this morning, but I didn't, so. I'm ready to take the.
Do you want to read it in?
I'll read it in, if you think so. Next one here, Landfilling Regading Application Number 566 PL 24-17, 18 Oak Shade Avenue LLC at 18 Oak Shade Avenue. Proposal to construct a new stone retaining wall and regrade the rear of the property to create a more level yard area and perform a main site development activities. The hearing closed on March 26, 2024.
Yes, take it away. So this was the small property we saw last week, where it was a pretty straightforward application, where they were trying to regrade the back of their yard, which would make the negative slope towards the neighbor, the adjacent neighbors significantly better. The neighbor submitted testimony being in favor of the plans, because it will obviously aid in the runoff coming to his property. The only real thing that we noted on here was the truckloads. We estimated 10 to 15 trucks. And then the trees that will be planted, which I saw.
Condition B.
I was gonna say, I saw it somewhere when I read this afternoon. I think there were eight trees, I think, eight or 10 trees. And those will be part of condition B. But otherwise, it was a pretty straightforward, there's a garage there, he's not touching the garage or changing the garage, basically the back of the garage. The foundation's sort of exposed that he's planning on just kind of burying, so there's no real change to the use or to the land at all. So it's a very straightforward, quick application.
So are there typos, comments, questions, scrivners errors on this one?
Ask Adam.
I noted no typos, scrivners errors, or issues with capitalization on this straightforward application permit.
Okay. So why don't you call them?
Anyone?
I'm good to go.
Any good to go? Okay, anybody want to make a motion to approve as submitted? All right, Jamie makes a second? Anyone make a second?
Yep.
Amy? All those in favor?
Five to zero. One extension. Yep.
Grab the next one, too.
Great job. Yep, next item on the agenda is Landfilling Regading Application Number 565 PL 24-20. Ivan and Catherine Cameron at 105 Lee Warden Road propose to construct a new two-story addition to the west side of the existing single-family residence, construction of a new terrace, detached garage and shed, and reconfigure the driveway area for related site development activities, including regrading of the property and installation of stormwater management. Adam, take it away.
Yes, so this is another application we heard last week, which is the proposal to build a small, somewhat decent-sized addition terrace, garage and shed on Lee Warden Street? Lee Wadeon Street? Lee Warden. It was a fairly straightforward application. We didn't see anything out of the ordinary. There were some back and forths with town professional engineer Joe Canis. All his comments were addressed at the time of the hearing, so that was pretty normal going into the drainage system. It seemed to conform, so it was pretty straightforward. Did anybody note any additional comments or scrivners errors, issues with the application?
I just am noting that I'm glad that we added my comment about this would not meet the ADU potential regulation, because it does not meet primary building setbacks. So I appreciate that that was in section three. So thank you for that. Aggressive, but I'm good.
Was there some suggestion that that might not be the case with the final regulation? I mean, I agree with it, but this says that will restrict ADUs to meeting the principal.
We just kind of put them on notice, saying, are you aware?
Should it say will, or should it say may?
May, yeah, maybe it should say may, yeah.
Yeah, so let's change section three, the pending proposal may restrict ADUs.
Because we don't have an ADU restriction.
Yeah, may, may restrict.
And we did bring this up at the meeting, and they confirmed that that was not an issue. So it's not like this will come as a surprise to them. We discussed it with the applicants at the time.
Yep.
That's just a finding.
Yep, and that's just a finding. Anything else from anyone?
I think that last sentence needs to go also. Thus, if the proposal passed, maybe you could not be created.
May not, may not, yeah. Or change it to may not, yeah.
I would just strike that whole sentence.
Strike the last sentence.
Pending proposal may restrict ADUs meeting. And then kill the last sentence.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay. Does anyone make a motion to approve as amended? Any make a motion? Do I see a second? Jamie makes a second? All those in favor? One abstention.
Fantastic.
Talk to you in a booth. All right, thank you, Adam, appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is approval amendment from February 27, 2024. So that was the, all right, that was, 27th, that was the meeting in 206. Must have been one of our last public hearings on the ADUs. One of the last public hearings on Seven Cedric. Right, and we talked about general meeting. 24 Cherry Street got punted. That was confirmed to a future date. Then we talked about 7 Mayflower Road. 6 Mayflower, yes. Roy's Restaurant, where we approved that guy's outdoor dining area. What was the next one? Federal Realty came in, they gave us a little speech on what they did. And then we looked at the pre-application for two-squad winging for that one and approved it. Any questions, comments, typos, scrivners errors on this one?
I believe Mike, you weren't at this meeting.
I watched the video.
I was not there, and I did not watch the video, yet.
All right, so with that said or not said, interesting motion to approve as submitted. So George is making the motion. Or so Jamie's making a second. All in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Got it. Five to zero to one. Chairman's report? I don't have a chairman's report tonight. I've never thought about it, but I'm still not going to do it. It's okay, right? You're good. Directors' report, any special?
Nothing new to report.
Okay, upcoming meeting is April 9th and April 23rd. Anything special going on there?
Next week, we have two continuations of public hearings. One was for Shady Acres Road, the other was 29 Highview. Those are two continuations. We have a draft resolution for Cherry Street. That hearing was, I think, last week or two weeks ago. So should not be a lengthy night.